What's happening?
It's a big one.
Yeah.
We're dying out of doctored tonight.
Again, that's how many more time we see.
Fifteen million persons.
Versus the other system.
That's right.
That's right.
All this. When you could like.
Yeah.
You gotta damn best if you remember all those things that tell them.
Yeah, I never can say.
Hey, everybody, I'd like to call this meeting over the Madison Public Schools Board of Education to order these rides from. Pleasantly. The flag.
Thank you very well.
Thank you. All right, so as usual, we start with our school community session and public participation. Do we have anybody now? Anybody online either? Thank you. Uh, next is our Board of Education Student Representatives Report, so that's Grace and Katie.
Thank you. So I just want to first start off by welcoming the new members. It was very competitive this year, so congratulations on your spot. Um, but we have a few updates. The first one is our trinasters coming to a close, which is unbelievable. I'm already one trimester into my senior year. We have exams when we return from Thanksgiving this year, so definitely going to be a lot of studying this break. And on Wednesday, next week is the Hand Guilford football game. It'll be hosted at the Surf Club this year, so we have that home team advantage. And I encourage everyone to come. The Tigers have been doing amazing this season, so we're looking for a win. We have a new addition to our weekly newsletter that's sent out by Mr. Sutery every Friday. And that comes from student leadership, which is the class officers of each grade, and it's on responsible technology usage. So this week's edit is in regards to how screen time can negatively impact attention span. So it's just giving some healthy reminders on putting screens away before you go to bed, so you can have a better sleep, and also keeping screens away during school day. So you can focus more on your work. And this Thursday is the National Honor Society Fall Inductees Ceremony, so it's for seniors that either weren't selected or didn't apply in the spring. So it's another opportunity to be rewarded for their service and leadership. And then last week was the Seela by Literacy exam for high school. It was primarily for the seniors. Um, juniors will take place in the spring, but lots of students were recognized for their proficiency in Spanish.
Awesome. And then there was also the school play that took place last week on Thursday and also Saturday and Sunday. They took a break on Friday just so that they wouldn't conflict with the football game. But they performed Dracula and it went super well. I know a lot of students tried their best to attend and the tickets were also um, free because I think Mr. Sutery covered the cost, so any students that got to go got to just enjoy the performance. Um, they also announced the spring musical will be Mamma Mia and they did. Um, they did a new approach that they actually let the community pick the musical, so I think it was between a couple others, but Mamma Mia came up top. And everyone is very excited about that and looking forward to it. Um, there was also the Vex Robotics Competition on November eighth, I believe that was on a Saturday. And Daniel Hand hosted it this year. There were over sixty-five teams, so it was a huge turnout and I think a super successful competition as well. And then also last Tuesday was Veterans Day, so Daniel Hand always hosts the um, Veterans Day Assembly where we just get to honor our veterans. And so it's a super important, like special event. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Any questions for student reps? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cook.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Just a very brief update today. Um, just want to recognize Joe Baraco, who's the Food Service Manager for Chartwells. He was um, awarded the Champion of uh, Inclusion Award by the United Cerebral Palsy of Eastern Connecticut in recognition for support for an employee. And uh, he was honored at a dinner last night. I haven't heard from him how it went, but I'm sure it went uh, went very well, but it's just a great example that his organization is, you know, uh, and a partner of ours, Chartwells is is doing, I think it's great for our students to see that type of inclusion in the workforce and it works. So congratulations to Joe. And um, in terms of preschool, we have been talking about this uh, as a board, so certainly for our new members and then just as a reminder for all of our um, continuing board members for preschool um, enrollment next year to relieve some um, of our um, not, I wouldn't say overcrowding, but our, our number of students at Neck River to kind of balance the schools as best as possible. We are planning on moving all of our preschool classrooms to Brown, so there's two classrooms at, at Neck River for our three and four-year-olds. Um, obviously our four-year-olds would be going into kindergarten anyway, uh, but we will have to move our, our, our three-year-olds um, to Brown School. There is um, two beautiful new preschool um, classrooms at, at Brown School that are, um, we saw on the tour today. And then there's another kindergarten classroom that we would look to uh, um, move back to kind of just balance out the, the buildings a little bit. It does look like we, um, and we're working through this through the budget process and in preschool is always tricky because we, um, there's two-year-olds that will qualify for preschool that we don't know that are out there yet, although we um, you know, do work with all our community organizations and our families to try and uh, identify students. Uh, but we don't know the enrollment, but it does look like we'd be able to go to three classrooms. So we have four right now, two at each building. Uh, but with the enrollment, um, as currently projected and what Dr. Battalia and the principals have identified, looks like we can go to three, which will be helping our budget because we'll need to add um, spoiler alert, in the budget, we'll need to add some teachers to Neck River, um, that we knew were coming in fifth grade, but also in some other grades, so uh, at least one other grade, so um, that will help offset that slightly. So that's what we're doing. So we're going to start that communication. We talk to employees and we're going to start the communication with families in terms of the preschool for next year and what uh, location for that. So um, but I think it will be, uh, there's always some pluses and some minuses, uh, you know, some pluses to having all the preschools together. Uh, so uh, but we, you know, will miss out on having them identi-, you know, connected with the kindergarten classes. There is some transition for those students, but um, we will, we'll make it work. Uh, that's uh, Paul had her report tonight.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cook. Um, next is board member comments, and I would like to start that by congratulating this board. Um, we uh, received notice that we are, um, we've been, we are recipients of the CAE Board of Distinction Award Level Two. Um, over the last couple of years, we had achieved level one, and you have to be level one for two years, for at least two of the last three years in order to be eligible to be level two, which is the highest level. Um, we're among a um, handful of boards in the state that have achieved the level-two, uh, Board of Distinction Award. And that will be presented at the CAE Conference coming up, um, at the end of this week. Um, it's uh, it's kind of a big deal and thank you all for being members of this amazing board and um, for uh, always putting the students first. Um, and uh, and working collaboratively together. It's uh, it, it really benefits the students. And you are to be congratulated, so thank you. Uh, any other board member comments? One's going twice, okay? Um, next, any audience response to information presented? No audience, okay. We are bruising. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some.
Second.
Galen seconded by Diane, thank you. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? So the motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you, that's unanimous. Um, now we have our board committee and liaison updates, beginning with curriculum and student development. Um, they have not met yet. I know that um, Kathy's not here, she's the new chair, but I know that they haven't met, so um, in fact, um, we're going to get a couple of reports tonight. So uh, let's moving on to the facilities committee, and that would be Emily.
Yes, so the facilities committee met this afternoon. We had a special tour of the new and improved Brown Elementary School. It was really great, um, as you all have been hearing over the past couple of years. And seeing some of our tours, the work that's been done there, so we got to see it, you know. Finished students in their classes, classrooms put together. It looks beautiful. Um, a lot of it brightened up in the main hallways, the library, as you may know now, is like closed off. It looks totally different. Lots of cute areas around the building, like sitting and small group activities and um, it looks beautiful. It, it there's a new playground for the littles. We saw the new preschool classrooms, which are gorgeous, as well as um, some special rooms for intervention and PT and OT. Um, Mrs. Spooner and Mr. Henderson gave us a tour along with Peter. And they say everything is really going great. We asked, you know, what's missing or what do you think, and they were like, nothing. It's really going well. The kids are adjusted, sorting their way out from here to there. Um, and the teachers are happy. It was, it was great to see it all. Um, you know, refreshing. None of our committee members want to add anything.
We're there today, um, just that they allowed the parents and the families to tour, I think, twice once in the spring and once um, I think before school this year.
Mm-hmm.
And the library's fabulous, all new furniture, shelving, like spaces that are um, sort of cozy for reading and it's just, it's beautiful.
A lot of cozy spaces. Anything, Lucy, you wanted to add from your?
Uh, so much different than when my kids were going to school. It was a, it was a wonderful tour. Um, the, I, I was really impressed with the outside uh, playgrounds and the pathways and everything. That was amazing. That was a lot of tree work.
Hmm.
Um, and I guess they're going to um, make the basketball court a little bit bigger. I guess some parents were complaining about it not being big enough or something. I don't, I didn't catch that.
It sounds like it's due to just be repaved and sort of
That's nice.
refreshed for next.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be done.
New hoops was the uh,
New hoops, yeah.
And some area for foursquare and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that'll be done next, it sounds like.
No, it was great. Nice, bright and cheery. It was wonderful.
And the murals that are very similar to that river.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful murals. Photos.
So it was fun.
And uh, there is still some work left to be done um, next summer, like, for example, one of the things in the CIP is to um, redo the cafeteria floor and the uh, kitchen. Um, so there's
Windows.
And, and then windows are eventually in the CIP. So there's um, stuff to finish it up, but it is an amazing transformation. Um, it's just seems, it just seems like a completely new building, um, you know, built on, you know, whatever age it's, it's um, structure is, but inside, everything is just so new and fresh. And um, you know, new woodwork everywhere, um, millwork in the classrooms. Um, and uh, it's just, it was exciting as a, you know, a parent who had three kids that went through there um, at various stages, um, it was so neat to see it, um, so rehabilitated. Uh, it's wonderful. So, any other comments? Yeah, okay. Any, any questions for Emily? No? Okay, thank you, Emily. Finance Committee, Galen. Um, we have not met. Our next meeting is five PM on December sixteenth. Okay, Personnel Committee, um, Maureen is not here this evening, um, but I will share on her behalf that we came to um, a um, tentative contract agreement with the Nurses Union. Um, they seem very pleased with it. Uh, we're going to ask for a board vote this evening. Um, the members of the committee are very pleased with how it came out. Um, and uh, we will, basically, we're moving as a committee, uh, the board's support um, later as an action item. And we, uh, we will have uh, an executive session to discuss um, the features of the new contract. We have Heather with us, um, our HR Director, who will um, explain what the, you know, the new contract looks like, um, and then we'll be able to come back out on the record and vote for it. Okay. Um, Policy Committee, Diane.
Uh, we did meet tonight and reviewed a bunch of policies we've seen again and again. We'll see them again next meeting. Um, tonight in your packet, there are policies for review with a recommendation from the Policy Committee to waive the second reading. Um, four zero three zero point five, family and medical leave, which we have seen before. Um, the notes from Shipman and Goodwin are included in your packet. There's also six zero eight zero point one point one, educating students in the gifted and talented program. Nine five one zero, time, place and notice of meetings, and six one five four homework. So the family and medical leave, um, is a very minor change. It's um, to make us compliant with um, revisions of two-state laws. So the model policy was um, revised in order to reflect the legislative changes. So these are things that must be made, and they're minimal, which is why we're recommending to wait second read. Six zero eight zero point one point one, educating students in the gifted and talented program. This um, is a uh, rescinded replace policy because our current policy was outdated. Shipman and Goodwood recommended updating it. Um, and also because our current policy did not align with state law, so now it does align with state law. It's a, not a very long policy. Um, then there's nine five one zero, time, place and notice of meetings. This is actually um, in our bylaws, so it will require a two-thirds vote of the whole board uh, to pass. And um, but the only change in there is that we changed our meeting times on Tuesdays from seven thirty to seven. So since that's the only change, we're also recommending to waive the second read tonight and vote on it. Again, we need a two-thirds vote of the entire board. Then the last policy is six one five four homework. This policy, um, we're actually retaining our policy, but as a regulation. So the new policy is very short, and that's why um, we're recommending that we waive the second read. We do not vote on regulations, but the regulation is our old policy, so we already sort of approved it. So um, those are the policies in your packet tonight for um, actually, I was looking at it tonight. And your report.
Did you also, I'm sorry, just real quick, cover what we went over?
Um, actually, we did like six policies. There are variations of discrimination, updating. It, it was all updating to be compliant with either state law, federal law, Title IX, discrimination, changing of um, what's included in the definition of things. It was all things that must be done. Um, and so most of those policies you will see um, as action items at the next meeting because we did recommend to uh, waive the second read on them. Um, yeah, I already put my paperwork away.
Good, thank you.
Your report.
Any questions? Okay, um, Learn Liaison, Galen. Um, I believe next meeting is December ninth. She'll have her report after that. Yes, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to the exciting action item section of our meeting. Uh, action item ten, I need a motion to approve a generous donation from the Daniel Hand High School Boys Soccer Boosters to the Boys Varsity Soccer Team in the amount of four thousand dollars for uh, the purchase of Parkas.
So moved.
By Anne.
Second.
By Emily. Thank you both. Um, any discussion? The application is um, in our board packet, uh, but it was approved by uh, um, Athletic Director, uh, Chris, and so the reclamation is that accepted. Tell the board. Need further discussion?
To generous donations, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, I'll call the question. All in favor of accepting it, aye. Opposed, nay. The abstentions, motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Um, action item eleven, I need a motion to waive the second reading and approve the following policies. Forty thirty point five, family and medical leave. Sixty eighty point one point one, educating students in the gifted and talented program. Uh, ninety-five ten, time, place and notice of meetings, and sixty-one fifty-four homework. Do I have a motion?
So.
Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mary Anne, thank you. All right, and as Diane pointed out, we have to have a two-thirds vote in favor of waiving um, the second read, uh, second reading, so um, that's
Two-thirds vote is for nine, nine five one zero, is by law.
Okay, I apologize.
Sure.
Yes, but that's lumped in with all of them. So in order to have that one pass, we needed two-thirds vote. Um, but obviously vote as you choose. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Our motion carries seven, nothing. So we have waived the second reading, um, of all of them, and ninety-five ten, we have a um, we passed that bylaw change. Okay, action item twelve. Or um, motion to approve the disposal of used equipment, and we have a list of all the equipment in our packet. Um, so you. Yeah. Um, so we got a motion, Diane, we get a second.
Second.
Emily, thank you. Any discussion? Any questions?
A lot of chrome books.
It is.
So do we like recycle any of this, any parts of it?
Yeah, we work hard to recycle all of it. Um, you know, we have to go through a procedure. It's not something we can um, just toss out, but we have the replacement cycle of ninth grade, sixth grade, and then um, you know, they're at the elementary level, they're, they're at the school, so we just replace them as, as we can. So um, but yeah, every year taking seniors' chrome books back, we went to the finish line, eighth graders, same thing, um, and then we're replacing them as they go on.
Like, can you, a family buy, like, if it's being recycled?
Pretty much worthless at that, at that point, they truly are, you know, you know, they
Have you seen one after four years of?
Yeah, and they're pretty much equivalent, like four years of the high school, they take a little bit better control of it, middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they get, they get their, they can beat on it, um. And I think, you know, originally, they were really only made to be the last three.
And the laptops too, the same.
Laptops go a little bit longer. Um, we typically try and get five years of the laptops, but um, yeah.
There's some desk tops.
Yeah.
I mean, my desk, desk tops. If you've ever seen the kids with their backpacks.
All right, so thank you very much. I'll call the question. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Uh, action item eight, I need a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Um, and just for the new folks, um, you don't have to be present at a meeting to vote um, in favor of or against um, approving the minutes from that meeting, as long as you have reviewed the minutes. Um, and but some people choose to abstain if they weren't at the meeting because they feel like, you know, maybe they didn't have the opportunity to assess whether the minutes were accurate or not. Um, but that's a personal choice. Um, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-eighth meeting.
So.
Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Galen, thank you both. Um, all right, any discussion or proposed amendments?
Yes, I think I should abstain. Um, I did not read the minutes. Were we elected? I don't reme-, I don't, we weren't even elected at that time, so I didn't even read them. So is that?
Yeah, yeah, that.
Yeah.
I don't expect anything in a way. Okay.
I mean, you can never be compelled to vote for anything as a board member.
Okay.
So, but you can always feel free to abstain, as long as you understand that when you abstain, you're actually going with the majority vote. You know what I mean?
Yes, right.
And also, as a side,
Wonderfully.
When, when the chair calls for a motion, if you are the motion maker, like I moved a motion, you can't vote against it. So, but you can as a second. So if you make the motion, so I moved the motion, I'm not supposed to vote against it because I made the motion. But you can second a motion and not necessarily vote for it, just proceed.
Seconding just allows it to get in front of the board for the vote, but it doesn't commit you to that, to voting in favor of it in effect. Um, okay, any other questions? Good question. Thank you. All right, uh so I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes of October twenty eighth? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two abstentions? Okay.
Are you, you guys abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
So five zero two on that vote. So listen in. Sorry, abstaining, zero. But sure. Um, okay, action item fourteen, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November eleventh, twenty twenty five Board of Education Organizational Meeting.
So.
By hand, do I have a second? Jessica. You, all right, uh now this one, you guys were on board and you actually looked present, so you could um you could, you don't need to abstain, but that's right. Uh, any other, any uh recommended edits or amendments? For discussion? Now, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Abstentions, motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Um, and action item fifteen, motion to approve the minutes of the November eleventh, twenty twenty five Board of Education Retreat.
So moved.
By hand, do I have a second?
Second.
Emily, thank you both. Um are there any recommended edits or anything to that? Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Our motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Um, action item sixteen, we need to discuss and take possible action on the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the United Public Service Employees Union, Madison Board of Nurse nurses local four twenty-four, unit one thirty-seven. And this is for the contract period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And the discussion is proposed for executive session, so I will need a motion to enter into executive session at seven twenty-seven PM to discuss the proposed, sorry. Yeah, 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 to uh to discuss the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the United Public Service Employees Union, Madison Board of Nurse nurses local four twenty-four, unit one thirty-seven, and invite in Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Craig Cook, and Human Resources Director Heather Dobson for that discussion. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By hand, do I have a second?
Second.
Jessica, thank you. All right, uh all in favor of entering executive session for this discussion? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven, nothing. We are now in.